Okay, good evening, everybody. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the Daily City Council this Monday, August 12, 2019. Let me have all, can we all please rise and say the pledge to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let me start by making the general announcement. For those of you wishing to address the city council on any item on the agenda or under public appearances or oral communications, please complete a speaker card at the entrance to the council chambers and submit to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Let me have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Ms. De Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Present. All right, all present and accounted for. Let me go on to presentations. The first presentation we have up is the Second Annual Crazy About Cars Event. Here to present is Pauline Fong, CFO and Board Member of the Daily City Public Library Associates. Good evening.
Oh, he's like magic, he pairs and everything works. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Buenaventura and Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester and our council, you know, members. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to talk about an important event, you know, for our libraries, which benefit our communities, not just Daly City, but also Broadmoor and Koma. So, first of all, I wanted to go ahead and, let me see who's quickly, our venture, Marie Filarosa, who's also our board member. You can stand, Marie, okay? Mrs. Spinda, who's part of our committee, and she's also Commissioner. Spinda was the Arts and Culture Commission. Victoria, okay, our most prestigious executive director, being our Daily City Public Library Associate. And Chela, please stand out. Well, everyone knows her, so. And, okay, and then Alex Heraria, who's been our official photographer for the event. And we are now in our inaugural, not inaugural year, but our second year. And we think that it's going to be bigger and better. All the photographs you already see almost are from Alex, so we can't take credit for that. So I wanted to go ahead and cover some highlights about the event. First of all, you know, this, we call it Crazy About Cars, and there's so many different really intriguing, you know, components of this event. One mainly is the crowd favorite pit crew challenge, okay? And this year, we're so lucky, because so far, we know that, you know, the big guys and women, because actually, women are part of our team mostly for this event and even within the dealership, is a pit crew challenge where Toyota and Ford are going to go ahead and go against each other. That's exciting, isn't it? Okay? And if you all recall next year, last year, or if you don't, basically, this is like NASCAR style. And you've got two teams pitted against each other, changed tires, it's timed, there's like three different rounds, and the winner gets a trophy that is definitely taller than anyone in this room. Okay? And so, and as you can see, you know, we try to encourage, you know, the teams to provide women as part of the teams, and that has been done so far to date. Then we also have the car show. And this year, we have space, we have enough spaces for about 100 motorcycles, cars, and trucks. And some of them are probably things that you've never seen. Our Honorable Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester, he actually provided his Tesla last year. I mean, kind of expect it back.
I didn't win.
And I think I heard that someone's going to provide his, anyway. And then we have, you know, the antique fire truck from Koma and the trolley from Cypress Lawn. But some of this is beautiful. And if you've never been to a car show before, this one has just about everything, because it's not just one theme. So I think that, you know, you definitely want to come out, and everyone is so personable. They just want to go ahead and share their love of cars and to help you learn more about them. Then Home Depot will also be back again to go ahead and provide wooden components for kids and people of all ages to really make and race your own wood car. And they also gave out prizes. Not only did they give out that barbecue that I want, you know, but they also gave the kids this Terra Aquarium, you know, as a prize. So as you can see, the happy family underneath that, the host staff gets into it, you know, and they're really very excited about doing it again this year. So we also added another component, because, you know, as, you know, we can't go ahead and change our tires NASCAR style at home, right? But Skyline Mechanics Department will be on hand to go ahead and demonstrate how to do that. And they're also going to talk about, you know, their job training and educational program. And we're very fortunate to have Julia Johnson help us with that. Then in conjunction, David Canopus's office, we're also going to have a job awareness and training, because all we've been hearing, you know, right from the construction industry, how you can't get enough people who are highly qualified in skill to work, you know, in the industry. But this is also happening in the automobile industry. And this really directly impacts, you know, our region. And so, we're going to be getting the trades out, you know, to talk about a lot of the county and regional programs where, you know, people can go ahead and get free training. And then we have live music, not just by one band, but two bands this year. And Hispanic All-Stars, well, they're called All-Stars because basically, they're all former members of Santana, Tower of Power, and Primus. And we've got Los Mocosos, it's actually Mocosos, and I apologize for the mistake in the spelling, but they're a mix of Latin pop with ska, swing, and rock. And there was six-degree records, so both of these are very highly accomplished, and I think it will keep our event very lively. And then there's other programming. Jefferson High School Robotics Club will be back, Kids' Groove with Princess Ryan, lots and lots of very interesting vendors, that's going to be doing very great, wonderful programming, a live DJ, and so much more. But we want to go ahead and really thank our presenting sponsor, City Toyota, because they have again stepped up to be our presenting sponsor. And I wanted Eleanor Serrado to go ahead and stand up and, you know, be recognized.
Was it her birthday also?
Yeah.
Birthday.
Yes. You know, and, thank you, Eleanor. And then Arlie Amonte, who's the Service Director, you know, for City Toyota, he's also a graduate of the Skyline, you know, program. Then I wanted to go ahead and thank also Ceramone Ford. They're new to us this year, and we couldn't be more thrilled, because as you know, for any car show, there's so many Ford cars. And Sharon Kawaguchi is here, she's their marketing consultant, supporting Ceramone Ford. I think a lot of you know her. And Matt Shown, who is their new GM, and we just love him. He is so pro-Daly City, you know, and he also, you know, has a special relationship with Skyline, and everyone just sings their praises. I think he donated the vehicle to Skyline, you know, for their emerging mechanics to work on. And then a very special thank you to our partners, Ceramone, okay? Thank you, because he makes placemaking happen, not just for our libraries, but for all of the city departments and all of the not-for-profit groups at Ceramone, so we really appreciate it. And then Bob McLennan, he's never going to show up to be thanked, but, you know, he's the owner of Planet Fitness, he's a race car enthusiast and philanthropist. And really, through his, you know, work, you know, we're able to go ahead and put these elements together, and he donates all of the cash prizes, you know, to the competing teams, you know, as well as, you know, to kind of keep pepping us up, you know, to get it done. And then, of course, you know, Home Depot for Paul Christensen and his team, you know, for helping us. Then, I really want to go ahead and thank our council members, because you guys have really, you know, you've come to the event, you've supported it in so many different ways, you talk about it, it's on your Facebook, you know, and that's what we really need. It's, it means a lot, you know, to, you know, DCPLA and to your communities to feel your enthusiasm for the event. And I don't know if you guys saw this last year, but Jocelyn Ashley did the coin toss, okay, to see who would go ahead and go first, you know, in the pit crew. So Mayor, you know, Buenaventura, that is going to be your role, you know, this year. And I will show you how to go and do the coin toss. Actually, Jocelyn can go and do that. So, you know, thank you for that. And as you can see, you know, Glenn is there with his family, and, you know, it's so great because it really makes this event, you know, a real true sense of placemaking in our community, right? Where we can see the added value and, you know, we begin to define our community. And for you guys to be so accessible, that makes all the difference for everyone. So, thank you for that. Okay? So whatever you have to do, get to Ceramone Shopping Center, okay? From 12 to 3:00 PM, okay? This is by the Macy's side, where generally, you know, you see the farmer's market, okay? And just really experience the tremendous energy, okay? And outpouring of support by our businesses, our nonprofits, our civic and community leaders, and supporters, you know? And just get crazy about cars, you know? Don't forget that Mission is free, okay? The event is family-friendly, and bring your cameras, okay? Because as you can see, there's lots of great, you know, photographs. And help spread the word, please. Thank you.
Some of our council members, let's go ahead, Ms. Giovanni.
Well, first of all, I want to say, it was great last year, but I can see where you guys really did twice the work and got more people involved. Thank you to you, Pauline, and everyone. And I know that you told me, but maybe you need to tell the audience of why you chose cars and the library together, if you don't mind telling the audience, that would be great for them to know, if you have a chance.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and do it from the broad, you know, spectrum, you know? Of course, we all toss around ideas, and Marie's full of them, and I, you know, and Glenn knows this, basically, I developed my love, you know, for cars, because Rosie, you know, donated a bunch of books, right? Picture books, the kind that you put in your coffee table, you know, if you had room on your coffee table. And Glenn doesn't know this, but I actually kept, you know, the best ones. And I just fell in love with them and just kept going and kept doing, you know, Googling them and everything, you know? So we all have like different paths, right, about cars? But you know what? Look at Mission Street. Look at from the top of, now, it's not even, it goes way into San Francisco, and it goes all the way down through South San Francisco. Look at all the people who are neighbors, are families, okay? Who have all these businesses, small, medium, and large. The number of people that they employ, the tremendous connections they have to our community, okay, in terms of what they support. You know, they grew up in this community, you know? I go to Mitsubishi, I've gone to all the car dealership, okay, to ask for things. They're all connected to our community, they're all proud of it. They all want to do something in some way, even for some of the corporate ones. It'll take some years to build that relationship and get corporate to say yes, but we're working on it. But this is our heritage, it's our legacy, you know? And when you talk about libraries, right, and placemaking, and how we make sense of who we are in any given space, you know, I think that this is the best part of learning, that we learn more about ourselves and what drives us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'll have the book.
Ms. Flom Martinez, thank you.
No, you are, that's a few hard things.
No, I won't ask you any hard things, I just want to commend you. I can feel your passion for this, and it definitely shows. You speak very well. And is it Alex?
Yes.
You have, you have some skills, because I was looking very closely at the cars, and they all appeared period correct with the upcaps and things like that, except the truck, I think that wasn't at the site, though, and you took that somewhere else. But anyway, thank you so much. I didn't see on the flyer, and you know, something, I will go anywhere you ask me to go, but if you have any food there, I will be there. But, all jokes aside, thank you so much, Pauline, and great job you do, looking forward to it.
Very much.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll go first.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to say, thank you to DCPLA for having this event. I think that, you know, we sometimes get misperceived as Daly City as being just this empty suburb. And I think events like this gives it the richness and the fabric of what Daly City's about, you know, things about cars. And I remember being like a 16-year-old kid messing around with my Honda Import back in the day, and that was part of my cultural identity, because other Asian-Americans were doing that at the same time. And I think by getting all the folks all together, this is a great showcase to show what we're about and to care about our libraries. And I want to say thank you to you and the rest of DCPLA and library and everybody that has their hands on deck. Thank you.
Yeah, great.
Dr. Rod already has it on his calendar, I see.
Just don't forget.
Ms. Manalo, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for organizing, and it seems like it's even getting bigger from last year. Last time in that photo, I had Ethan, I think, within my belly, and so now, now he'll be able to enjoy the cars and see all, he loves seeing all the new things as he's learning. But most importantly, how it affects our libraries and really the access for people to have computers, access to, you know, books, and your continuity in that mission. So thank you to you and to everyone here on the team for your continued passion and giving to the community. Thank you.
Well, there you have it. We are a grateful city council for what you do, and I'm sure we'll do our best to also promote and advertise this event on our social media and community channel, so.
I appreciate that, thank you. And thank you for all the resources from the city, from our fire department, the police department, and everyone else who contributes to it, and especially to our team at DCPLA. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pauline.
See you at the event.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a public engagement in immigration, discussing Know Your Rights and other immigration issues to the public. Here to present is Flomi Javier Diza, who is a partner at Reeves Immigration Law Group and President of the IBP California. Ms. Diza, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening to you. Vice Mayor Sylvester, Member of the Daly City Council, good evening to you all. As Mayor Buenaventura mentioned, I am an immigration attorney at Reeves Immigration Law Group in San Francisco, California. But I am honored here today to stand before you, not as a partner of my firm, but as an immigration advocate, and as a president of the Integrated Bar of the Philippines California Chapter. For a background, the IBP California are Filipino lawyers. But most of us are also licensed to practice law in the Philippines, and many of us are immigration attorneys, that's why we are here today. I would like also to acknowledge one of my colleagues here, Attorney Loua Lasugi, who's with Asia-Pacific Islander Outreach Program, and who happens to be a member of the IBP California, and who happens to be my wife. Anyway, the IBP California has been partnering with the Philippine Consul General in San Francisco. We have a free legal consultation every first Friday of the month, and we had conducted several talakayans, or public forum, involving immigration and other legal matters. In the past, we partnered with Conjen Ben Surto regarding the deferred action for childhood arrivals and other immigration matters, and we partnered with the media and nonprofit organizations, immigration lawyers, and law firms. These are difficult times for undocumented and even legal immigrants, but we all deserve to be treated with dignity and respect, and it is more important than ever to know our rights and work for justice. And given the increased enforcement activity by ICE, it is important that immigration rights advocates like us and local communities like yourselves are prepared in case this happens again. This public engagement, we call it talakayan, because it originated with Conjen Ben Surto, is a public forum. So we're intending to do one this August that involves two topics. Know Your Rights will be talking about rights of undocumented and even legal immigrants, if in case ICE comes knocking at your door in the workplace, at the workplace, or where they are in public places like this one, if confronted by ICE agents or law enforcement officers. That's the first part of our discussion. And as we all know, when President Donald Trump became the president, there were many immigration laws, regulations that were amended, changed, repealed, and there are new ones that even immigration attorneys and advocates could hardly follow. So that's the second part of our discussion, to update immigration laws such as the expedited removal, meaning that if you're here less than two years and that they entered without inspection, they can, this undocumented can be expeditedly removed. And just today, the USCIS already published the final rule for legal immigrants, more difficult to come here, and they have to deal with the public charge issue. So there's a lot of things going on almost every day, so that's why it's very important for us to update, you know, our, the public, these immigration, new regulations and laws, so that they know what to expect and what to do. We are thankful for Mayor Buenaventura, we reached out to him to give us a venue, and fortunately, we have one already with the help of the mayor and Ms. Leilani Ramos, they were able to secure us a venue that's going to be at the Hillside Park Clubhouse here in Daly City in August 24th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And I invite everyone else to join us. It's not going to be easy, because even if we publicize this, we put it in our social media and everything, we have done this in the past as an immigration attorney of the, member of the American Immigration Lawyers Association. Since President Trump became the president, we already had these Know Your Rights discussions, but the undocumented, you know, or those people affected by the current administration's policy in immigration, they, we don't expect them to be there. So I don't know how to convince them. Definitely, maybe their friends and their families, you know, would join us. But the good thing about this public forum that we are planning is that we invited and partnered with the media, and hopefully, they will Facebook Live the event, so that the public will be engaged, not only in Daly City or Bay Area, but all throughout the United States. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to present our public forum, and hopefully, the August 24th public forum be the initial step, partnership with us, not only in immigration, but the IBP has a lot of resources and partnership with immigration attorneys and nonprofit organizations. Thank you so much for your time, and good night to you all. Thank you.
Well, yeah, that's very good, thank you. Mr. Diza, I think we have some questions, so please stand by. Go ahead.
First of all, I want to say, thank you very much. You're a great additive. We're familiar with, obviously, with Consul General Conjen, and to have you here in Daly City is very, very helpful. We've had several workshops, as you know, with other immigration attorneys, but we're so happy that you're here, and if we can help get that word out as well, you know, with the individuals we work with in the community on the ground, I will definitely tell them. And I was wondering, are you going to have, could you possibly have a Spanish interpreter?
That's the plan. We are going to bring some Spanish interpreters.
Thank you.
Immigration lawyers who speak Spanish.
Yeah.
And in addition to that, I failed to mention that I'm waiting confirmation from the F-Bank and also some other organizations, the Office of Supervisor Canapá to join us for this event.
Yes, yeah, so I definitely am on the ground with a lot of communities, so I will definitely get the word out.
And one more thing with, also with the Consul General of El Salvador.
Conjen. Oh, Ana.
You're waiting for confirmation also.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Of El Salvador, you said?
Ana Valazuela.
Good.
Yeah, thank you so much. We really, I think it is very tense times, and as you, even as an immigration attorney, things change for you daily, so.
Thank you.
Definitely be there, and I'll try to bring as many people as I can. Thank you so much, very humbled.
Other questions, comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, thank you for the work that you're doing. It's really important to get the word out, especially about knowing your rights for the community, and if there's any way, I know you have media that will be there, but, you know, we will spread the word, and also, maybe we can, if you have the information, be able to provide that on our social media outlets, so it can be shareable with others. But also, let you know, we did host Know Your Rights Immigration here in City Hall last year, so we are definitely understanding the plight to let everyone know and understand. It's great that you're providing up-to-date information with this administration. Now, there's so many new legislative policies that are coming out every single day, so with you educating the community is huge. So thank you for your time and commitment to the community.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
Other questions? Dr. Rod?
Again, thank you for coming out and doing the Know Your Rights campaign. It just makes me so mad that we have to do these campaigns, you know? We live in times like this, that's just, I would never thought in my lifetime that we would be, we would have to do these type of workshops. But knowledge is power, and we need to provide those, we got to provide the capital and the knowledge capital, the political capital, so we can navigate and understand how to navigate the system. So thank you for doing this for our community.
It's my pleasure, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I echo everyone's comment on the council. Any kind of knowledge is better than no knowledge at all. So thank you for what you do, and Daly City is definitely a diverse community, and we want to support in every way we can. And I'd like to thank city staff for helping to facilitate and making a venue available for such. And let this be a message to all within Daly City that we will do the best we can to support everyone. Thank you.
Before we conclude with your presentation, I just want to let the public know that how this came about. We live in a truly remarkable community in a great city. This man got in touch with me after all the stuff that we were going through here in this community. I didn't reach out to him, he reached out to me and said, hey, look, there is an issue that I can help with, we'd like to put on a Know Your Rights forum, and that's how it started. And so, I want to commend you for stepping up and volunteering your time and effort without even being asked, and putting together in a short period of time what I think the community needs to heal some of the wounds that we have now. I think we are on the way to doing, building the trust of the community, and this is all part of it, and we appreciate your help and effort. So on behalf of a grateful city council and this community, I want to thank you for that. So on behalf of a grateful city council and this community, I want to thank you for that. I do have some questions about your initial statement that has caused me some concern about you mentioning that you aren't certain why people won't be there. That, for obvious reasons, I know the answer to that. And it troubles me that you had to make a statement like that. It shows that there is still fear in the community and that we still need to work at it. I like the idea very much of the idea of streaming this event, especially on Facebook Live, which a lot of people watch. But I would also suggest that if there is a way that they can not just watch, but actually call in, ask questions, interact with you, so that if there's a specific concern that they have, they're able to get some legal advice and some action on what they could do. I would also be appreciative if you have established some kind of a hotline so that if there are issues that come up, there is a number that people, an 800 number that they can call for immediate consultation and advice when ICE shows up at the door. So if you could do that, we would be tremendously grateful, or we're already tremendously grateful for what you've done. And we look forward, I will be there, and I'll assist you in any way I can. I look forward to seeing your fellow attorneys in their work. And God bless you for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and all the suggestions are duly noted. And we'll do that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deese. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. We have four items on the consent. Does anyone, I'm sorry, let me, I'm sorry. Let's approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 22.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Let me go to approval of the general agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, the agenda's approved. Now let's go on to the consent. There are four items on the consent. Does anyone want to pull an item on consent? I will pull item number three. So with the exception of item number three, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number three.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, those items are approved. Going back to item number three, which is the use of any newly donated funds and state asset forfeiture funds for a Daly City gun buyback event. Captain?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. The police department in the city is looking to host a gun buyback event at City Hall in the request from the council. The City Hall is going to be the location for the gun buyback event, which is scheduled to take place on Saturday, September 7. There will be a three-hour operational period. We're still working through logistics now, but we expect the time period to be from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., as it has been in the past. This will be our third consecutive gun buyback. And we've had one in 2017, 2018. And in total, with those two, we've collected over 254 firearms, all of which are processed through our evidence processing process and then taken to a melting facility where the firearms are then melted and made safe and unusable for future use. Out of those 254, in the past, we've had nine assault rifles that were collected as a result of the gun buyback. And this year, we're making a slight change. There'll be $100 provided for every firearm, which is consisted of a handgun, rifle, and shotgun. But assault rifle, California-defined assault rifles that are functional and operational are now going to be $300. It's completely anonymous to those in the public when they arrive. Nothing will be requested from them. They can just hand over their firearms in a safe manner, and then we'll process them and give them a receipt at the processing station itself. Funding will be provided through state asset forfeiture funds, not to exceed $30,000. But we also have reached out for additional donated funds, which we have received in the past from community and political leaders as well throughout the county. Staffs available for any questions?
Great. Thank you. Captain, the reason why I wanted to pull it, it was, thank you for the presentation, it's also to ask, so I think for me, my objective is to get more assault weapons off the streets. And I'm wondering if we can play with the amount when it comes to an assault weapon. Now, I know it says here that it's $300. I was actually thinking, do you think we might, and I want to hear from the council as well, but I'm wondering if we can double that to 600 for assault weapons and just, and maintain for, I mean, actually, I'd like it to be increased more, even for the handguns. And if we're getting $30,000 from asset forfeiture, well, first, I guess I want to ask you, did we get any leftover funds from the last gun buyback?
No, we did not.
So we used them all?
We did. We used all the donated funds, and the remainder of the funds were asset forfeiture at the time as well.
Do you know how much we were asking for assault weapons then?
$200.
$200?
Yes.
And then the handguns were also 100?
Yes.
Okay. So, and how much did we have to use for that?
For this year?
No.
Or years past?
Years past.
I think we had up to 40 that we had asked for last time. I think it was the one in 2018, and we used, I think, almost 24,000.
Okay. So I think Pam has done a lot of work on getting more money, right?
Yes.
Fantastic.
So Pam, what do you think?
I think we can, I think we do it. I think we can, what are the, the council, I definitely, more for handguns and more for the assault.
Yeah.
But whatever you think, the other council thinks on the amount, on the 600 or 500.
What do you think?
Yeah, well, I think if increasing the amount, you know, is going to push people to, you know, sell those, especially the assault rifles, then I'm in favor for it.
Do you know if the other cities that have done gun buybacks, if that's the standard read for assault weapons?
So the standard that I've always known, leading up to 2017 and 18, has been 100 and 200 respectively.
That's it.
That's it.
Well, I think we need to go at least double, but what do you guys think?
May I interject for something? And I believe the sentiment, I understand the sentiment completely, and it makes sense. This is a city attorney question as far as up to, can we have a resolution that says up to? Because what if we don't have the funding for it? I know we have several letters going out soliciting donations, and it is likely with Pam's help to get more. But in the event that we don't have the funding for it, can we have a resolution that says up to a certain amount?
You can definitely have that.
I do.
You can have a limit.
Once we collect our money.
Go ahead.
How many assault rifles or weapons did we get from last year?
So last year, we collected eight California-defined assault rifles.
So it was eight? Okay.
All right, Dr. Rod?
I think if it's doable, then we should, we should try, especially with the times that are happening in the nation. It's, yeah.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I, it's a great suggestion. I'm not in favor of having an ordinance prepared because if we run out of money, where's the money to come from? The general fund? We are already in a structural deficit. I would be optimistic in hearing and getting the community involved, some of our businesses and corporate, to help donate money. I have to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, first of all, because it was your idea back in 2016 that really got this matter going. And getting the money is very, very important. So I'm definitely all for it. I think we'll be setting a precedent by increasing the amount so that we can get folks to turn these weapons in. And while at the same time, I've heard you say, Captain, as defined by California law, I would need to know what's considered as an assault weapon. I got a pretty good general idea, but are you going to apply that to handguns that holds over 15 rounds? We need to be more specifics as to what we are looking for. Obviously, an AK-47 is definitely an assault weapon, but as per California law, we need to identify, and those are the weapons that we would pay extra to obtain.
Yeah, I think those are good points. I mean, I think we can do the resolution to say up to so that it's sort of within their discretion, depending how much money we actually ultimately collect by the deadline date of September 7. And then I think we should also leave it up to the officers to decide if it qualifies as an assault weapon. I think you guys can make that decision. And if you think it's worth, you know, if it's a handgun with a lot of magazines capable of loading, I think that's an assault weapon. If it's going to kill a lot of people in a, with a high capacity.
High capacity.
Yeah. So I'd leave it up to their discretion, and that's what I think we should propose. So any other comments? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, with Vice Mayor's comment around reaching out to get more sponsorships, you have my support on working on getting more funds for this endeavor.
Go ahead. Yes, thank you. Good.
Also, I like the increase because I'll go back to the people that I've been dealing with and as well. And then once they hear this, I think that that will encourage them actually to donate more money.
Yeah, so I know historically Jackie Speer has contributed, David Canopus contributed, and I think Phil and Phil Ting and Scott have committed also. So I'm pretty sure we're going to get the money. So why don't we have a resolution that we double the amounts up to 200 for handguns, 600 for assault weapons, high-capacity weapons, and then it's, yeah, that's it. Who wants to make a motion?
Is that the high-capacity handguns?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to amend the resolution up to high-capacity and double the amount of the money.
Great. Any second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
That's not specifically enough, up to high-capacity. That does not tell me anything. This pertains to assault weapons or what's identified by California law. I will agree to a motion to allow the police department to make a decision up to a certain amount as you deem necessary as classified as an assault weapon, not to exceed over $600. As for handguns, if somebody turns in a handgun that only holds six rounds, and you're going to automatically increase that to 250, there are some handguns that hold 17 rounds. How do we differentiate?
Like I said, I think you should let the police officers make the decision. They know what they're doing.
All right. Okay, so can we call the question again? What was the, what was the motion on the floor? I heard 600 and 250, and the 600 applies to handguns also?
600 applies to assault weapons, and that could include handguns with high-capacity capability. Oh, go ahead. You want to say something?
I just, in regards to the California-defined assault rifle, there are very specific factors that create an assault rifle. When we talk about high-capacity firearms, it's not the firearm itself, it's the magazine.
The magazine.
That creates the capacity. And so we're not necessarily focused on the magazines, and I'm not saying we can't. But in the past, it's always been gun buyback. We've taken in ammo, we've taken in magazines, we've taken in things of that nature, but there's no compensation for that. The handgun itself fires like any other handgun. It's just the magazine that is used that creates the potential for high capacity, so...
So my question would be, if somebody turns in a handgun that has a magazine capacity of 10 rounds, and if they know that they're going to get extra money, they can just purchase a magazine that holds 25 rounds, an extended magazine, and says, I'll turn in the extended magazine with this gun?
If that was the direction, correct. And you can find a lot of those, I think, online for relatively cheap.
Well, let me ask you, what do you think is the easier language for you, to make it easier for you to collect as many guns? And my specific concern is to get assault-type weapons out of the street. So what would you recommend?
I would stick with what we've stuck with in the past, and that's any firearm that's not considered California-defined assault rifle is, if we want to raise it to 200, 200. And then everything that's defined as in the penal code is then increased to the amount determined by council.
Okay, so just what's defined in the penal code? Okay.
It's very clear and specific that way. When we look at it, we can say, yes, it is based on these factors, or no, it's not, as opposed to having any subjectivity associated to it.
You fine with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. But I also like to encourage those, because I know there are those people that are scared to turn in the ones that are already illegal. But how do we, can we also make sure that they turn those, that some way they can turn them in? Because I know that in conversations and places I've been, they have them at their house, but they don't use them, of course, but they are afraid to turn them in. So we need to encourage them to turn it in, the ones that have been banned.
So for the event itself, anybody can turn it in. It's 100% anonymous. So if the individual themselves isn't comfortable, and they have a family member or a friend or somebody that they want to provide to in a safe and secure manner, put them in a trunk or a locked container, that person can bring them. No one's going to ask for any ID. And/or they can always call the police department as well. And we can either have an officer respond to, or they can always bring them to the police department. We would prefer that they notify us that they're bringing them as opposed to walking to City Hall with them, but there's always other options as well.
Okay, we need to move forward. Why don't you amend your motion to make it so that it's as defined as penal code?
You can do that.
I'll make that motion then.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I may amend the motion, I'd like to make a motion that during the gun buyback event, that the police department is authorized up to $600 for any assault weapon that is classified as per California law, and up to $200 for any handgun.
Okay.
How's that?
That sounds good. Second by you?
Yes, second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any objection? All right. Thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you.
Good work. Good work.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know, and this is something that folks in Daly City should know. Captain alluded to it. I think we ought to offer a mechanism that throughout the year, as funding exists, that they can contact the police department to come pick up a weapon from your home, and we can still pay them for the weapon. Because they may have a change of mind after the gun show, oh, I should have went to the, I mean, not the gun show, I mean, the gun buyback, and, you know, things may happen. And, you know, hey, I want to get rid of this. And we should make that opportunity available for our folks. Daly City, we can't afford all the other cities at once.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. All right, moving on to public hearings. Item number five is request to continue the public hearing on the appeal of administrative use permit at wireless facility 0 Longford Drive, Chang Sin Cemetery. The recommended action is a motion to continue the public hearing.
Through the mayor, we may request to have this continued to a certain date, September 9, 2019.
Okay. September 9, 2019. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Just do a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Ms. De Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Benaventura?
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to communications, we have findings of the independent review initiated by the city manager.
Okay, good evening, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. By way of brief background, because I am going to hand it over to Steve Toller from Management Partners. From 2014 through 2018, the city did use an outside consultant, Public Financial Management Inc., or PFM, if that rings a bell, to assist with the development of a long-term financial plan for the city. And previous long-term outlooks presented to council between May 2016 and June 2018 respectively, did include what the review found to be conservative assumptions that indicated significant future fiscal deficits would be generated due to projected low growth in revenue sources such as property and sales tax and increasing personnel expenditures. In May of this year, at the direction of myself, the city manager, we engaged, the city engaged Management Partners to provide an independent analysis of the city's past financial practices, spending, and accountability, as well as... financial practices, spending, and accountability, as well as the assumptions and calculations that were incorporated into fiscal year 1920 biennial budget for the general fund. As part of this project, Management Partners developed a fiscal model tool for the city's use, as well as a 10-year financial forecast to increase transparency of the use of taxpayers' dollars. The new long-term projection presents a more realistic set of projections for the general fund. The assumptions made by Management Partners are based upon current economic environments. They incorporate updated revenue and expenditure data and use a more neutral set of assumptions. The result indicates higher general fund revenues, primarily in the areas of property and sales taxes. Management Partners has included a number of recommendations for city management that we intend to adopt in order to improve the budget process that will lead to fiscal transparency, accountability, and a more effective budget process overall. This will be especially important for fiscal year '21 and '22, and in the longer term, to maintain the city's financial stability while continuing to provide high-quality city services. This is an informational item only and does not require action, but at this time, I will turn it over to Management Partners to give an overview of their review.
Thank you, Sean.
Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Indulge me for five seconds. It's nice to be home. I grew up here. Spent 10 years of my middle school and high school years here in town, and it's really nice to be back. And to serve you in this capacity as well. So we, Management Partners is a management consulting firm that consults exclusively with local government. All of us who work for the firm have worked in local government for several years. I have over 20 years of experience with, in serving, in this county. I served 17 years in the city of Foster City as well as in Millbrae. And so I know this community, and I also know this county. And we use that and leverage that experience and knowledge to be able to take a look at your general fund budget forecast that was used, the budget practices that were implemented. And we have some thoughts and some recommendations on how those could be improved for the future. We also, at the request of your city manager, developed a fiscal model that can be used by staff to help serve you and provide you the information that you need to make decisions, policy-level decisions, on how to expend the resources that you've been given to watch over. And so tonight, what I'll do is I'll briefly capture what our observations and our recommendations were, and give you a brief kind of overview of the fiscal model. You won't necessarily be excel experts at the end of tonight, but I hope to at least let you know what the tool is that staff will be able to have and use and refine to give you quality information that you need to make the fiscal decisions for the future for this community. So just briefly, what we did is we came in, after we launched this project, and talking with the city manager and staff about this, we ended up conducting interviews with various staff members, got information and data about how the budget had been prepared in the past, and most specifically, the most recent '19 and '20 biennial budget that you're currently operating under today. We analyzed the information that we received, made some observations, and conducted analysis to determine perhaps a path forward for you, and we're reporting the results tonight. So let me just, you know, the staff report and the agenda packet had our report in it. We're just going to touch the highlights of what we had observed. The biennial budget that is currently in place right now was based on a fairly conservative set of assumptions. And what a conservative set of assumptions means is that it understates, perhaps, what the revenues are that are projected, and potentially uses very conservative assumptions with respect to the expenditure side, under the concept of under-promise and over-deliver. Conservative budgeting is a good approach to ensure that you're not left with a shock at the end of the year. But the flip side of that is that if it's not conservatively realistic, then you end up having to postpone or decide to not fund certain projects, certain initiatives, certain priorities that you may have, because it may appear for a set that you don't have the revenues to be able to provide those services. And so as we looked at your budget, it was based on a very conservative set of assumptions. The revenue projections had really not been updated based on most current and relevant information at the time, and particularly in the area of property tax and sales tax. And so it was using somewhat stale-dated information to update what the projected revenues were in that biennial budget. And when it comes to expenditures, it was using fairly conservative assumptions. And what I mean by that is, for example, in your general fund, 75% to 80% of what you spend, you know, to provide services is people, is paying the employees that serve this community. And the salary costs were being projected based on what the top step was in that pay plan. So if you have an employee that had just started with the city and brought in at step one, and each step has a 5% gradation, right? If you're budgeting them at the top step of step five, you're basically budgeting them at 20% higher than what you're actually paying them. And so it's conservative, but that then becomes a question about, you know, being realistically conservative in terms of that. So that was one area of several that we identified, that there were some conservative assumptions that were being used, is the first, coming in and reviewing your budget, the first thing that was notable, missing link for me, was a long-range forecast. There was no long-range forecast that was incorporated in the budget. That is a best practice that is used by many, many organizations, cities in California and across the United States to give you an opportunity to see, and a long-range forecast of what the trends are, so that you can make some decisions today that will help ensure that your long-range fiscal health is sustained. And so we noticed that that wasn't incorporated in the budget. And we understand that there was a tool that had been prepared for you by another consulting firm back in 2014. Staff may have done some updates internally, but frankly, there was little update in terms of the appropriation of the '19 and '20 biennial budget when we took a look at that. With respect to budget development approach, I think that with the size of the city of Daly City, using a decentralized approach can make sense. And what I mean by that is having other departments proactively participate in budget development. Your engineering group is the one that really puts together the capital improvement plan. And they do a great job of doing that, there's no question about that. But the problem becomes then is who ultimately is the, for lack of a better term, the quarterback of the budget process? And how is that information and the policies and the direction for budget preparation being communicated throughout the organization? So decentralization is something that definitely works in a city the size of Daly City. However, it has to have the coordination, communication. We found that that was somewhat lack in the previous budget processes. There was a reserve policy that was being instituted. The council has adopted a minimum reserve policy of 15% of annual operating expenditures. And then staff had developed an additional operating capital reserve, about $12 million, to help with cash flow purposes, which we found is somewhat duplicative of what the original purpose is of a minimum reserve. And I'll get into that in a minute with our recommendations. And then finally, we noted that in the capital budgeting process, again, the formation and creation of the capital improvement plan is outstanding. But we noted that when it's then brought into the operating budget for the next two years, there are some operating costs and some cost allocations from the general fund, which are rightly charged to overseeing and managing some of those projects. And when they were implemented or included in that biennial budget that you adopted, the gas tax funds, for example, would be depleted by the end of this current fiscal year that you're in, based on a budget basis. And so that's something that really needed to take a look at. And so as we identified those observations, we came up with a series of recommendations that we've categorized into these six areas. Firstly, is that, you know, it's really, it's strongly suggested that you incorporate in your budget discussions a long-range forecast. And this is really good for things like your utility funds, your capital improvement plan, as you're doing a multi-year plan, and definitely your general fund, especially since, you know, most of your services, proponents of your services are provided by the general fund. And I think something that's also very important is that in the budget process and the discussions that you have here in this chambers, and ultimately the document, is that you're transparent about what those set of assumptions are. Forecast is only as good as the assumptions that are built into it. And being very clear about how revenues are being projected in the future, what assumptions they are based on, as well as the expenditure side, is going to be really important for full disclosure to you in terms of when the city manager prepares that for your review, and of course, for the public. With respect to minimum reserve policy, the best practice that's recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association, which is the finance officer folks throughout the United States, is that a general fund for a typical city should have a minimum reserve policy of not less than two months of annual operating expenditures and transfers. And that would be about 17%. You're at 15% right now. We recommend that you would increase that at least to 17%. But we think that it's also incumbent upon you to take a risk-based approach and looking at the proper reserve levels that you need to have. So while that might be good from an operational perspective, you should also take a look at what are some of the risks that we may have in this community. It doesn't take much to look up a few hundred miles from here in Butte County and see the disaster that occurred from the campfire and what happened there and the devastation that that's created for the town of Paradise. Similarly, I think, you know, we all know, one more created is right next door to us, and the San Andreas Fault is right almost underneath us. And so it's incumbent upon the city to really take a very close look at what the reserve level should be. For general fund, you could end up having something between two to three months as a target range. And I think that gives you some flexibility to be able to work within that range. And I'll show you how that operates in a fiscal model. With respect to budget development, we strongly recommend that you assign formally, the city manager assign the role of budget director to the finance director. And then there'd be a budget process that's used internally that is very collaborative, with a lot of communication with the departments, where finance department can actually go in and help departments in preparation of their budget, and work very closely with the engineering group in terms of the capital improvement project plan that's developed so that it's a complete look at what your fiscal resources are. On the revenue side, there's some more detailed recommendations that we've made in the report, but basically what it boils down to is using a realistic set of assumptions and using some tools that are available. Just one I'll mention is that the assessor's office for San Mateo County, gosh, back 20 years ago, created this incredible tool called the Assessment Roll Tracker that's available online. And you can see up to the minute what the assessed valuation forecast is for your city, with or without the redevelopment agency. And so it's a really great tool to be able to predict and project what property taxes are expected to be in the coming year. And all the finance directors on the peninsula pretty much use that tool. It's a great tool, and we really recommend that that be used for projecting your largest revenue source, which is property taxes. On the personnel side, we think that you should project a little bit closer to what the actual steps are for the approved positions that are in the budget. And so that'll be important. And then on the capital budgeting side, as I mentioned earlier, it's going to be important that all operating costs are incorporated in that capital improvement plan, so that when you're looking at deciding what the level and extent is of funding, let's say, street repayment or facility improvements, that you really have a clear picture as to what the financial outlay is going to be, not only for the biennial budget, but doing that as a long-range forecast, so that you see that you have the funds available for the entire life of the capital improvement plan. So that brings us to this concept of the fiscal model that we've helped create for you. And I've already mentioned a lot of the bullet points that are on this, and I want to go in and show you that. But remember that a fiscal model and a financial projection is only as good as the assumptions that are used in developing it. And so we've created a tool that you'll be able to put in a whole host of assumptions. And fiscal modeling or financial forecasts are a little bit like a scientific experiment of crystal ball gazing, you know? And as you look out, you know, five to 10 years, the precision is not really what the focus is. The precision is really important, I think, as you identify as much as you can what the assumptions are and what you're starting from. But, you know, the concept really is trends, is what do we see as our trends in the future? What do we expect with respect to, let's say, pension costs? What do we expect with respect to development that can end up impacting property tax, sales tax, utility users' tax, et cetera? These are all important things that need to be incorporated in that. We've built in a set of assumptions into this model that I'm going to show to you tonight, one of which, when you're doing financial forecasting, is you've got to take a look at the opportunity or the potential for a recession. We all remember the recession that hit us in 2007, 2008. It was the Great Recession, ever since the market crashed in 1929. And so historically, when we look at recessions, they have pretty much hit California cities and those in the Bay Area, and specifically in San Mateo County, on average, about once every seven to eight years. And it impacts your revenue stream anywhere from 2% to 5%. This last recession hit a lot of cities harder than that, depending on what their mix of revenues was, especially those that had a lot of sales tax and hotel tax. And so we have incorporated in this budget a recessionary assumption that goes out to, assumes that it'll happen in about fiscal 2021. And I think we're seeing some signs that that may be a potential, and the real estate market slowing down in this area, and a lot of economists are suggesting that there may be a recessionary adjustment in 2021. And so it would be a modest recession adjustment. We've got some inflation factors in there. We've incorporated a reserve for your review of what two months would look like and three months would look like in developing this model. And we've then taken a look at property taxes, sales taxes, et cetera. On your property tax side, that Assessment Roll Tracker tool that I mentioned, your assessed valuation is going to grow this year by 4.75%, which is great. That's total assessed valuation, which means that your property tax numbers will increase by 4.75%. Those of us that are under Prop 13 fully well know that unless you sell your home, it only increases by 2%. But with the turnover that occurs when somebody sells their home and somebody buys it at these incredible prices that the real estate market's in right now, that's when you're seeing such significant growth. We've also, what you're already exercising a best practice with respect to sales tax, which is your second-largest tax revenue source in the general fund, by using a consultant that really focuses on sales tax, that's Muni Services. They've done a great job. They're used by a lot of cities in California. And they've done a great job of doing a long-range projection, a five-year projection of your sales taxes. And then there's some other things that you'll have to just kind of keep your eye on when it comes to the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we've incorporated the existing model based on top step. It's going to take a lot of effort for staff to go through and make some modifications to that model. So right now, I understand that there's a little bit of conservatism built into this model that's using the existing top step philosophy. That's going to need to be addressed, though, as part of your next budget cycle. We've incorporated in here a couple of other key items. First is what the latest actuarial study shows from CalPERS with respect to your pension costs, as to what they're going to be over the next four years. And then we've also incorporated then a pay-as-you-go philosophy on retiring medical, which is what you're currently doing right now, which is about a million and a half short of what you should be putting aside to make sure that your retiring medical costs are fully funded. So with all of that incorporated in there, the updated fiscal model indicates that in the year that we just finished, 1819, there was expected to be deficit spending, drawing down the reserve levels by about 2.6 million. But over the next 10 years, it appears as though you will actually have a surplus. And when we hit 2024, 25, there is a significant change that happens then, and that's when the pension obligation bonds that the city issued many years ago, they will finally be paid off in June of 2020. will finally be paid off in June of 2024. And so when that happens, the general fund will be relieved of about $3.5 million of debt service each year. And that's why you're seeing on the left-hand side of this graph, you're seeing the, the annual surplus. This is revenues are greater than expenses, so what you bring in is, is greater than what you're spending out. It will grow up to $5 million in the future years because of this $3.5 million relief that you now have by fully paying off those pension obligation bonds, which was a great decision for the city to do, to take care of its unfunded liability at that time. As you know, unfunded liabilities can continue and you still have one with CalPERS and that might be another option that you want to explore as to whether or not you want to issue more pension obligation bonds to pay down your unfunded liability or use some of the reserves that you've built up to help pay that down as well. That's another option for you to reduce your, your pension costs in the, in the future years. So with all of that, let me switch over to the fiscal model real quick and just to help and demonstrate for you kind of how this will work. Again, I don't expect you to be experts with this, but you'll at least be aware of the capabilities that we've created. And I'm going to do some zooming in and out so that way you can see some of these a little bit better as we, as we talk about these. But we've created a variety of different tools here for you, for staff to be able to use, to put in different factors with respect to property tax, transient occupancy taxes, your hotels, franchise fees, business license taxes, utility users taxes, and a whole host of other, of other adjustments that they can use here. And so what I'll do is zoom out real quick so I can show you what the impact of this is. So when we look at, right now, your property taxes were expected to grow by 4.75% and that's what led to what I showed you earlier. If that was only going to be a 2% increase, you see what happens here is that in these first few years and in those future years, your surplus is not as great because we're not getting the big bump that we have with property taxes. So this is a great tool to be able to, whoa, to be able to make some assumptions. But if you're, must have a 47% increase in property taxes. There you go. So that's what that, what that is. And then there's a whole bunch of other, you know, individual factors that are included in there. If you're transient occupancy tax level, let's say that we think that, you know, the recession aside, maybe you have another hotel that's going to come online. So there's some tools in the background that we have that allow you to do that. But if we think there's going to be a 10% growth in the future, we can plug that in there and it has that an impact in terms of driving changes here to the, to, to the graph so you can see those, those grow up. We, we also built the recession in here. And so right now, if we turn the recession off, it would appear in these first few years that you would have anywhere from a $3 million sliding down to about a $1.8 million surplus. But with us turning the recession on, the assumption is that the recession would have a 5% impact on select revenues in the general fund, which is pretty much a little bit on the property tax, but definitely sales tax, transient occupancy tax, those are, that are very, that, that can be very much impacted by economic downturns. So if we assume that it's a 15% drop, like a major recession, then you'd see what impact that would have and what the recovery period is. If it was a four-year recovery that we're going to be using, instead of three years, you can build that in here so that way you can see what the impact is of the various assumptions that you're, you're making with respect to, and, and when it's going to start. Well, 2021, I don't know about that, Steve, maybe it's 2024. So we can plug that in here and it just basically defers it out a few years then to the, to that area. So it gives you some great opportunities to make some changes on, on the revenue side as well as on the expenditure side. For example, we built into here a long-range salary growth of 3.5%. If that was increased to 5%, if you assume that every year, staff costs are going to, salaries are going to go up by 5%, now all of a sudden you're in a deficit situation. Okay? So, so 3.5% is what was incorporated into this model and that'll all, of course, be based on negotiations with your labor groups. But it just shows you what impact that has, given that 80% of what you, you spend for the general fund is, is in terms of people. We've also built some factors in here for pension and if there are changes from CalPERS as it relates to the pension rates and the paydown of the unfunded liability that exists there, that will be able to be put in here as well. You see the pension obligation bond ends up expiring here in 2024, so it'll help you with actually about 3.7 million rather than 3.5 million by the time we get there. Three, three and a half is what the average was for those years. And then there's also some cost share assumptions here with respect to pension cost sharing that you have with your labor groups that could be incorporated in there. So again, you know, you have, you have some different tools here about expenditure savings and, and services and supplies. The other one that I want to just highlight is retiring medical. Right now, you're on a pay-as-you-go basis, which means that for any retirees that you have that are, that are receiving post-retiree medical that was based on the memorandum of understanding that you have with that employee, we're just paying those as we go. There's a, an accrued liability for that post-retiree medical costs and the latest actuarial study that was done indicated that that should have been $4 million rather than the 2.4 million that you're currently paying. And so if you started to put money aside into an irrevocable trust that would allow you to generate investment earnings on those dollars that you're putting in there to help pay for those post-retiree medical costs, it will increase the amount that you're having to put into the general fund. But I think that long-range, it will end up reducing your costs as you look out 15 and 20 years from, from this. So it's just beyond the 10-year horizon that we've incorporated in here. So suffice it to say, there's a lot of tools that exist and just so that you know, it's not just a bunch of, just, you know, smoke and mirrors, there are detailed spreadsheets for every one of these areas that summarize the revenues, that summarize the expenditure as kind of in a high level. But then all of the detail is all back in here in terms of where those numbers came from, what they were based on. And so this gives you the transparency that we believe that you need in terms of the long-range forecast. We've, I've had personal experience in, in using this type of tool with the three cities that I worked for and Foster City was the one that I worked at for a long time. We had a great relationship with our labor groups. We were completely transparent about how we were coming up with these numbers so that everybody really understood where we were with respect to, to, to our revenues and our expenditures in the future. It created some really awesome opportunities for us to have some great dialogue in terms, especially when we hit that recession and how we, well, we're going to solve that problem. So just a few closing remarks is that there's, the model is going to have to be updated as you move into the biennial budget period that you're about to enter into, you know, looking at development projects and what is, is on the horizon, taking a more detailed look at what those are and refining what those assumptions are with respect to assessed valuation increases that hits your property tax, if there's sales taxes expected to be generated based on any land use changes or other developments that are going to be coming on. When it comes to salary projections, we've already talked about that, that's going to have to be refined. It's important to only include approved positions that are in the projected salary costs. If there were any frozen positions, those should rightly be excluded and those are currently excluded right now. The discount rate, as you know, CalPERS, you know, we, we've just had the significant, well, significant impact in the reduction of the discount rate. That's the expected investment return rate that was down, that went, decreased from 7.25% to 7% and that had a dramatic impact on the unfunded liability. And we're in the final year of that this next year, the, that three-year or four-year implementation that they have. You know, the other shoe may still drop is that there's discussion about them still wanting to reduce that down to 6.5%. And that could have an impact on your general fund of, of over $3 million a year if that were to happen. And so it's something to be carefully watched and then again, you have a model now that will at least be able to incorporate that in there as you're looking at that in the future. And then two other areas, your retiree health, we think there's an opportunity for you to, to look at setting aside the minimum required contribution, did some actuarial study that will allow you to invest those monies in an irrevocable trust, which instead of earning one plus percent from life and from the county pool, you could end up earning up to 6% or 7% from an investment pool because California law is very clear about what general law cities are allowed to do with respect to, to investments. And in an irrevocable trust, you're allowed to do that. And finally, we've already talked about the capital improvement project side, but I think with a collaboration between the finance department, engineering and developing that, looking holistically at what those costs are going to be, both capital as well as the operating costs to manage those projects and to implement them, there's going to be a need to look at what those impacts are and if there's any underfunded projects, to what extent will the general fund need to, to chip in for that? Facility improvements, those types of things that are probably deferred maintenance needs that you, that you currently have. So with that, I'm going to be quiet. A lot of information we went through and I'll drink a little bit of a drink.
That was great. That was the best news I've heard for, in a long time. So I'm sure the council has questions, so fire away. Go ahead, Ms. Manuel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for that presentation. This is definitely refreshing and a breath of fresh air. For a long time, well, since I've been on the council, I've been asking for exactly what you provided, a long-range financial forecast. And it's the first time seeing this and the transparency with the model you've created is very useful. I, the questions I were, I was going to ask were addressed. I wanted to know how far off were we as far as our projections with our property tax? That was something that I've, I've asked in the past around the assessment, given some of the developments that we've had over the course of years. When we would see the financial analysis, it wasn't just hitting quite right. When I see a lot of, you know, the homes in the Bay Shore and other developments that have transpired at top of the hill, I mean, I know that as time goes on, it takes a while for that cycle to continue, but it was definitely feeling short of that. And so you're seeing your projections and the actual, where we land with our property taxes, it's good news. Also, another question I had, what is the model now for the, there's a direction in having a budget director or the finance director doing kind of this role as budget director? What is the model now in comparison to what you've recommended?
Yeah. At least how the model had been, the model that was used by staff in the preparation of the previous biennial budget is that the, the finance director was asked to assemble the, the budget. Departments were asked to put together their line item requests. Engineering was basically had taken over, frankly, the capital improvement project plan. But where we, what we found was missing was the interactive communication. Finance department did put together some of the payroll projections that were used, but we also noted that there were some areas where recommendations that were made or, or changes that were made were not incorporated that, that should have been. So the bottom line is that there was a decentralized approach with the finance director tasked by the city manager to assemble the budget, but there wasn't a lot of interactive dialogue and that's what we're really recommending here.
I see. So it's more of kind of making sure that everyone is communicative and on the same page as far as.
And I have to add, if I can add one more thing as well, is that engagement with you as the decision-makers is really vital as well. And, and we, we see a best practice used by cities is, is clearly developing some type of a strategic plan or policy, you know, calendar policy items, you know, as you're going into that budget process so that your departments, your staff know where your priorities are. And then as they're preparing the budget, and ultimately that comes through the city manager, it's the city manager that presents it to you, right? That there's a clear link between what your priorities are for this community and how staff has then met those, those needs. And so I think that that's also another ingredient that's going to be really vital as you, as you move forward.
That's great. I, I think that is important, especially around, exactly as you mentioned, around policy priorities and that reflected in the budget because that's, you know, that's important for that correlation indeed. And if we haven't seen that in the past, I think your model of transparency will help us move forward in, in, in that direction. I think those are all the questions I have, but thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, yeah, I can't agree more. We're all like, yes, it's probably like an affirmation, but yet we actually see it. It's actually happening, kind of, kind of like you knew it, but thank you for the, the numbers. And so it gives us a better start on what we can do together. And like you said, communicate together is, is a big part of it so that we then get, we can give the direction and start somewhere here. My question is when, back when you were looking at different departments and say, for instance, like our police unfortunately had different positions frozen, as you saw, but the monies were allocated, I believe, inside that budget. Is that correct?
The money, the frozen positions, it's my understanding in working with your, with your finance staff and looking at it in detail, were not incorporated in the projections.
Okay.
So the frozen positions were not incorporated in.
Were not incorporated in. So what is your suggestion?
The positions were, but not frozen positions.
Okay. So when the, the positions were frozen, what do you recommend as we're trying to repair and grow and, and put back like police and fire and, and different areas that we're so taken away from? Do you recommend that we allocate the money in it or just?
Well, that, that's clearly policy decision.
Yeah, we're the policymakers. We're, we're the policymakers. Yes, we are.
You will, you will at least now have a tool.
Yes.
By which to be able to, you know, project what those costs are and what the long-range impact is on all of.
Yeah. I was just wondering what the best practices were that you've seen.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, some, some cities that are looking to, to potentially unfreeze some positions, they'll use a fiscal model like that to say, to do some what-if. Okay, what happens if we do that? What will be the impact? And remember, it doesn't just impact the, the actual personnel cost itself, all the other things go along with it. Information technology, fleet, equipment, you know, other things that you'll need with that. You at least now have a tool to be able to do that. And it's good that if you're looking at doing that, that's something that's a priority for you, identified as a priority, then staff can do that analysis for you and give you an idea of what that's going to look like.
And if I may, Councilmember Di Giovanni, this budget process will look different than prior budget processes. It'll be more collaborative internally as well as we will asking information from council based on prioritization. And so that's a perfect question that would be vetted out through that process. You may all be on the same page with priorities, you may not, and everybody will have a voice as far as what they want to prioritize.
Yeah, thank you. And I also want to say that when we had our city council setting our goals, that this was one of our priorities, obviously, and then they were already in the council asking for it. So we want to thank the city manager for listening to us and, and engaging with you. And so look forward to if, how we have to adopt or we have to give direction or whatever we have to do.
Thank you, Ms. Giovanni.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Just want to say thank you for Crean's presentation. Hey, you really love numbers, huh? I was like, wow! How did you do that? No, because I have to, I have to, I mean, I don't have a finance background, but I deal with budgets and everything. And looking at this tool is an extraordinary tool to see and forecast the next 10 years and also anticipate recessions and see how we can optimize our funds to the different things that we prioritize on city council. So thank you so much.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, kudos goes out to the city manager for reaching out. The city manager saw that something was wrong and that is full and complete transparency. I know being on this council many a nights and I coined the term, if it's all night is all right. There has been arguments on this council regarding our reserves, a potential deficit that is about to come up, but with your presentation tonight, sir, I understand. And with the information you provided, it looks like there is no room to have any information that hasn't been thought of or that it's a possibility to input into this tool to do a what-if scenario as to what would happen later. This is, I'm only making comments and as we move along as council, we'll talk with staff. But what I would like to see to make our budget better later on in the future is cost recovery services. I think Daly City stands way back and I think. I think Daly City stands way back, and I think we need to redo the services that we provide to our community and just to make sure we're breaking even. I am totally surprised about budgeting for employees at the top step. I know this is going to take some work amongst the Personnel Division and to actually define what is it that we are actually spending money on. Don't just take an arbitrary number because that's the top step of what employees make. That is not full and complete transparency. So thank you for that, sir. The capital budget and the two different types of reserve, which tends to me to be redundant. We need every penny that we can get to be allocated so that we know where we can spend for our projects. And again, I will have to commend you, Ms. Malpe and Public Works, for properly using the money in capital improvements. I'm still going to talk about that slurry seal and, you know, and when you say that that money's going to run out in the year of 2020, well, you know, I remain optimistic. And I don't think so, but you know what? You're not holding on to the money. You're spending it as to what it's supposed to be used for. I feel, and I've asked this question many times during the budget session, if you don't ask, you don't get. I've asked, but I didn't understand. Tonight, I do. So excellent presentation, sir. This was exactly what I was looking for. Thank you, Ms. Malpe, for making this possible. Thank you.
Yeah, so there you have it. I think you've given us some hope and more understanding. And we are actually, at least I am, looking forward to more. And we're about to do some budget talks, and that's going to usually a dread, but I think this gives us a fresh perspective. It gives us facts to work with. And I think we're going to be able to be more understanding of what we need, what the city needs, and what direction we give. So thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Malpe, for bringing this all together. Do you have any concluding remarks?
I'm just thrilled to be able to have someone from the outside come in and explain it in a way that really makes sense. And for whatever reason, it wasn't making sense even to our executive staff when we'd go through the budget process. And I'm not saying that there was any, you know, sort of evil, you know, evil things going on historically, but I think that it's a new day and transparency is definitely where this council puts their priority. And I just hope that you understand that that's where staff shares that.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. Wonderful presentation. Okay, we're on to item number seven, which is the resolution confirming the Daly City Police Department's enforcement of immigration law policy. Gamas, how are you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm here this evening on behalf of Chief Patrick Hensley to request confirmation of the Police Department's enforcement of immigration law policy. The City of Daly City is committed to complying with the spirit and the letter of state and local immigration enforcement laws. Daly City is an extraordinarily diverse community, which is also reflected in every aspect of city government, and that includes our Police Department and our elected officials. The Police Department reviewed its existing policy, Lexible Policy Number 427 for Immigration Enforcement, for consistency with state and local sanctuary laws and policy. In the interim, the Police Chief issued a directive as Attachment One, which supersedes any and all existing protocols and policies pertaining to Lexible Policy Number 427, immigration violations during this process. Staff was directed to revise the Police Department's enforcement of immigration law policy with feedback from community groups and in collaboration with the city attorney and outside counsel. The Police Department staff received input from community groups and collaborated with the city attorney's office and outside counsel to develop a revised, comprehensive enforcement of immigration laws policy. The revised policy provides operational direction and operational clarity and oversight while reaffirming the departments and the city's commitment to equal service and public safety for all people. The policy provides specific direction to police officers and police management on the issues surrounding immigration transfers, information sharing and requests, mutual aid, judicial and administrative warrants, and chain-of-command oversight. The policy also provides for a chain-of-command review for any potential enforcement of federal immigration laws as they relate to the public safety component of California immigration policy. The policy was reviewed by the city attorney and outside counsel, who confirmed the policy is in compliance with the California immigration laws, including the Values Act, also known as SB 54, Truth Act, and Trust Act. As required, the Daly City Police Department and city staff met and conferred with the Daly City Police Officers Association on the approval of the policy. On August 8, 2019, the POA agreed to the content of the policy. POA requested and staff recommends that the revised enforcement of immigration laws policy be put into effect after all Police Department staff have been trained. In the interim, the Chief of Police's administrative directive will remain in effect. Within 45 days of confirmation of the policy by the city council, the Police Department will work with the city attorney and outside counsel to prepare and present training to, excuse me, training of the policy to all police personnel. The 45-day timeline includes coordination with outside counsel and the city attorney to develop, schedule, and deliver a two-hour training block on the policy for all police personnel. Any costs associated with the training of police personnel will be paid through the Police Department's operating budget. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor or council members.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any, I have some speaker cards. Do you have any comments beforehand? Any council have any comments beforehand? Okay, so this is the part where I'm going to call up some speakers who have requested to speak on this issue before we engage in discussion. We obviously like to hear what your input is. So I have three speaker cards on this issue. They're in order will be Sarah Lee, Maria Gillen, and Diane Ingles. Sarah Lee, come on up. You have two minutes.
My name is Sarah Lee. I work at Asian Law Caucus, and I'm also a Daly City resident. And I want to share to the public and everyone here that in July, Asian Law Caucus met with Daly City officials, including the mayor, city attorney, and a few others. And we had talked with everyone there because we had been working with Armando's partner who was turned, Armando who was turned over by Daly City Police to ICE unlawfully, who was transferred directly to ICE the same evening that he was arrested without a traffic citation. And after three months of detention, he is now home because of the community and legal advocacy. And I wanted to come here today because in July, in that first meeting with everyone, we had heard that Daly City officials would consult with community groups, that they would talk to community members about this new policy as they investigated their internal policy, which at that point was riddled with violations to the sanctuary state law. I want to share with you that on Saturday, we received news that this new policy would come two days before this presentation about this policy. And right now, as we were able to look at it, it still does not comply with sanctuary state laws, and it still allows collaboration with ICE. And I think this happens because there was a lack of communication with community groups, a lack of communication with immigrant rights advocates. And I think that all of us agree that, you know, what happened to Armando, we never want to happen again. But if we continue to have a flawed policy, it's hard to guarantee that this pattern won't happen again. And so I'm here today to ask that Daly City's policy actually complies with sanctuary state law, that you talk to community advocates, especially immigrant rights advocates, to be able to understand what these policies mean and to build on these sanctuary state laws so that there is absolutely no collaboration with ICE. I'm here to schedule a meeting with you all. I have dates and times. I'm able to schedule something with you all so we can actually get to the bottom of this. And I hope that you would hold off on issuing this policy until you get more community support and input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Maria Gillen.
Good evening, council members. My name is Maria Gillen, a seven-year resident of Daly City and very concerned about your plans to push forward a new policy that is, in my opinion, deeply flawed. We are all aware of the terrible miscarriage of justice that occurred to Armando Escobar while he was pulled over by Daly City Police and then turned over to ICE. I was here last month with other advocates, asking that you make significant policy changes so that we don't cause harm to others. What you are presenting tonight falls short of what our intent was. There has been insufficient consultation with community immigrant rights advocates. Your new proposed policy still does not comply with state laws, the California Values Act and Truth Act. This continues to undercut community trust and still allows for the DCPD to have collaboration with ICE. Daly City wishes to be a pristine and welcoming community, but something is broken. Something is gravely flawed, and rather than patch it with duct tape, why don't we borrow from the Japanese culture, where they take a broken object and patch it together, highlighting the flaws, respecting the history and the steps to correct the damage? Quoting Barbara Bloom, "When the Japanese mend broken objects, they engrandize the damage by filling the cracks with gold." They believe that when something suffered damage, when something suffered damage and has a history, it becomes even more beautiful. In this case, the gold would represent the valuable input and consultation of the community and immigrant rights groups and advocates. Don't mask the mistakes that were made with duct tape. Don't devalue the damage done or our ability to fix it. Postpone adopting this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Diane Ingles. Evening.
Vice Mayor and council members, good evening. I'm Diane Ingles. I'm one of your neighbors, 45 years plus, in South San Francisco. And things happen. Accidents happen, no matter how much your city is especially moving forward, just in this one meeting tonight, to have transparency. And the policy that is being put forth right now, I would just highly suggest that we take a look at it again with members, especially like Sarah Lee, to help with it, to contribute, and any members of the community that you can feel, that you know, that have firsthand information affected by. I know that it can be better. It is highly flawed right now, and some of the laws already, the laws in there, this policy proposed is not following them to the true letter of the law. I would ask that you please postpone your decision and look more in-depth at it with people who have good input for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, those are all the speaker, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Sunny. Just hand it over. I know, we know who you are, Sunny. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
I am very concerned about this particular resolution. And I think there is a need for us to communicate with our communities, and in particular, the Franciscan Park. There are a lot of residents who are now concerned with what can happen with enforcement of this immigration law. And on the other hand, where is the balance between our city being a sanctuary city? I think I'll try to invite an open forum at the Franciscan. If you can find time to discuss this with our residents and anyone else in Daly City who would want to come. Let us postpone the decision on this until we get enough input from everyone in the city. And when I say everyone, any citizen who has friends, relatives, who will be definitely affected by enforcement of these laws. I agree that laws need to be obeyed and enforced, but the fact is, where is the majority in this discussion? Are we ignoring the majority sector of our community in this? I don't think it's right that we vote on this, I mean, you folks vote on this tonight. I think there should be further discussion, and I invite the Police Department to come down to the communities. I can reserve our hall for an open discussion, so please consider that. I think we need a wider input from our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunny. We have Lee Aquila. Lee?
Good evening, Mayor Buena Ventura, Vice Mayor Sylvester.
Evening.
And members of the city council. My name is Lee Aquila. I'm the president of the Daly City Police Officers Association. First of all, I say the members of the POA do not want to be involved in the immigration business. The challenge for the city department and the citizens is balancing between respecting our community regardless of citizenship status or immigration status and avoiding an incident where a known criminal is released to further victimize anyone. This is a delicate balance, which is sought by SB 54, and there must be balance when putting that legislation into practice. The policy before city council tonight was the result of collaboration between the POA and police management with input from various community groups and other city departments. The proposed policy, in my opinion, goes far beyond the requirements of SB 54, is consistent with city resolutions, and codifies in writing many of the practices which were already taking place. The men and women of the Daly City POA are proud of our strong relationship with all members of the community, and this policy will only serve to strengthen those bonds. We would encourage the city council to support this policy as drafted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Aquila. Okay, so let me turn it over to the city attorney for some comment and some clarification. I would like you to address the issue that some of the public has made, that it does not comply. What I'm hearing is that the allegation is it does not comply with the sanctuary laws of our state, that it is not significant policy changes, and it doesn't comply with the California Values Act and Trust Act. So if you could address those.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Before I address your particular question, I do want to provide a little bit of background how we got to this point of having a policy before the city council. As you're aware, there was a current policy, Lexible 427, and that policy had been temporarily superseded by a temporary directive by the Police Chief to not have that policy in effect. As a result of that, the city council did have a resolution for us to collaborate and to receive input from community members. And so when we say received input, we have. And yes, we did have a meeting with the Faith in Action Group. We had a meeting with the Asian Law Caucus, indicating the concerns they have about the current policy and the incident that had occurred with Mr. Lopez in May of this year. So we diligently worked towards looking at the policy and review of that and basically suspending it. After that date, we did receive a model policy that was provided to us by Angela Lee at the Asian Law Caucus. That model policy was a result of a report that the Asian Law Caucus did that went globally to see what law enforcement agencies were not in compliance with SB 54. And yes, and in that particular report, it talked about Daly City not being in compliance. This is after this was built, and we looked at that as well. We took the model policy. We also took the analysis that was provided by the Asian Law Caucus. In considering the drafting of the policy before you, we also looked at the policies In considering the drafting of the policy before you, we also looked at the policies that was deemed to be in compliant by the Asian Law Caucus, that being the San Francisco policy as well as the Oakland policy, which in our understanding, and this was provided to us, and we took this into account, SB 54 has a lot of exceptions. SB 54 does prohibit the use of resources for immigration assistance, local resources for that purpose. But you do have to create a balance, and we looked into that. My offices did hire Myers-Navey, who also deal with police practices, as well as the drafting of other policies for other agencies such as Alameda, and they looked at that as well. So we did have an additional check, and that is just for the compliance with SB 54, because we did want to have a policy that created the balance, that also created the security and the safety that the community wanted, and also was in line with city policies as well. So there was, even though this was a short period of time, there's quite a bit of work and effort put into this, as well as collaborating with the police department. When you do look at the policy, the policy does take into account the model policy that was adopted by ALC. It has all the definitions in place, but it also puts additional checks with regards to public safety, which mirrors basically the San Francisco policy for immigration enforcement. The policy that you have before you does have a lot of specifics and creates certainty for the police officers in what they would do in instances that happen where you are faced with an immigration issue. The prior policy, we went from a one- to two-page policy to a six-page policy, and that is primarily why we diligently worked with the police department. It is before you. Yes, we did provide the draft over to ALC on the Saturday as a courtesy for them to see the policy, to see what we've done. And actually, if the council would like to have even additional, we did have a memo issued by our outside counsel, which is Myers-Navey, and they are present in the audience as well, that further did a check to see if it was in compliance with SB 54. So we feel very confident in that respect. So if there are flaws, we don't see it. And the presentation before the council and the plea to reach out to the community, I don't believe that the police department would have any issue explaining this new policy to the community to render the trust and the safety in regards to balancing public safety with the immigration, the new immigration policy as it complies with SB 54. That being said, if there are additional questions, I'm very much open to talk about aspects of the policy as well. I do have Myers-Navey, Richard Piarrota, as well as the audience provides the additional check that the council may need in further questions.
Okay. Let me start off by asking some. So as I understand it, in the initial meeting with the Asian Law Caucus, they presented a model policy of what they felt was the perfect solution or a perfect model that a city should comply with in their estimation or judgment, right?
That's correct.
And then, in my understanding also, that that model of policy that they presented has not been adopted by any city in California. Is that correct?
Well, I can't say for certain. I mean, that question did arise in our meeting, and at the time, I don't believe that was necessarily confirmed, but it was our understanding that no one has adopted exactly the letter of the model policy.
And then, so some of the, I've heard the term Cadillac policies of this type are the San Francisco policy and the Oakland policy. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. What have we done in terms of incorporating the San Francisco and the Oakland policy in our policy in Daly City?
And beyond, yes. So I'll kind of establish the base, and I am going to defer over to outside counsel because they looked at even further in the other policies. I think we've incorporated a lot of the definitions in the San Francisco policy and the protocols as it pertains to SB 54. With regard to the Oakland policy, I think that might be incorporating a lot of the operations language, and I will defer to Richard on that because he did a little bit more in-depth analysis on it.
Okay. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Richard Piarrota, Myers-Navey. We're a law firm that's based in Oakland, California. We have offices statewide. We are city attorney, or contract city attorney, for 26 cities, and I myself am a city attorney of a jurisdiction in Alameda County, and I reviewed our city's particular policy against SB 54. To amplify what your city attorney has stated, yes, we did analyze the model policy that was provided to the city, she provided it to us, against the draft that was provided by the police department, which we reviewed and understood to be a combination of the city of San Francisco from a definitional standpoint with the city of Oakland's operational directives. This is an operational policy similar to many other operational policies that your police department has, that other police departments throughout the state use. What I want to point out specifically is that this policy does go above and beyond SB 54 in a manner that it does not allow the police department to use specific types of determinations in their operational choices. What I mean by that is that they really want to rely specifically on judicial warrants in the process. The law, and I'll say this clearly, the law does allow for permissible arrest and custody of judicial probable cause determinations. Daly City did not make that choice and is excluding that from its policy. What a judicial probable cause determination is, is that it's a determination made by a federal judge or a magistrate, a federal magistrate judge, that probable cause exists that an individual has violated federal criminal immigration law. This was a deliberate omission, in my opinion, by the Daly City Police Department, and that your police department wants to rely even more specifically on judicial warrants. And in that case, judicial warrants, criminal judicial warrants. So this policy is clear that it's not about enforcing civil or administrative immigration law or policy. It's only about federal criminal immigration law and criminal law. So you can enforce all criminal warrants, but also specifically, and the law provides for this, judicial warrants which are issued by federal judges. You will not enforce federal administrative civil warrants for arrests, and you will not enforce administrative immigration detainers. So immigration holds will not be enforced, immigration detainers will not be enforced. Those are all aspects that are actually included in ALC's modern policy, model policy, or not even stated. You go above and beyond that by actually stating those actions that you will not enforce. In addition, you will not share information unless it's required by federal law. You will also, members will not stop, question, detain any individual solely because of the individual's immigration status, national origin, appearance, inability to speak English, or immigration status, including being named in an immigration hold request. Again, that's specifically asked for in the ALC modern policy. It's also an aspect, it's an actual statute in SB 54, not for any police agency in the state to honor immigration hold requests. You're in compliance in that respect and in compliance with the additional factors related to joint task forces, participation in joint task forces, and in also processing U visas and T visas. What your city attorney did mention is that you do even have, you add specific checks that are...
Yeah. Tell us about those checks.
Yes, so the checks occur when a police department member, a sworn officer, may enforce, may enforce, any and all criminal warrants, including outstanding felony federal arrest warrants. That's specific, again, in the statute. You may enforce, or they may enforce judicial warrants this way, that prior to arresting, detain, or transferring a person who is believed to be subject to a judicial warrant from ICE or CBP, which is Customs and Border Protection, members have to adhere to a procedure. That procedure is they have to call the on-duty watch commander and will be called to the scene. So that means the watch commander, if they're here at City Hall, the police department, they will physically go to that scene to review the CLETS information and/or the NCIC warrant information on the spot. So nothing happens until the watch commander gets there. Then the watch commander, that person, him or herself, will confirm with the agency, whoever issued it, that the judicial warrant, again, these are judicial warrants signed by judges, is for a criminal violation, not a civil violation, just criminal, and in compliance with this policy. So obviously, your watch commanders are the second set of eyes who have to be experts on this policy. Finally, the watch commander has to receive verbal approval, and again, it being verbal is expedited approval, from the chief before arresting or transferring the individual subject to this very specific judicial warrant. Those are extra checks. You have two extra sets of eyes, and even the chief at the end of the day has the final word on what occurs. That's the checks we're talking about that are not included in any of the policy that we've seen, that you've actively included.
So what happened to Armando, these checks were not in place, obviously, and that's the situation we're trying to correct by this policy?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Go ahead. Did you have any questions?
Not yet.
Okay. Ms. Manala?
No questions.
Any questions?
Yes. Thank you so much for that update, and especially the comparison between the two, the model policy and what was put together. I'd like to thank everyone involved in looking at that and make it much more easier to understand. We also need to know that this is not over yet. Basically, there's an ongoing investigation, so we don't know if our police department violated any laws. We don't know that as of yet. But to have a policy that reiterates the views of Daly City, then not having a policy at all, or that was vague, I think this is definitely a step forward to ensure the community that we do care. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
So, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you and the partners and the police, and as most people know, that I'm the person in, we all are, but I have been throughout the years, as most people know or would be surprised, in the Latino community, associated with the Latino community, meeting with the moms at the schools on Mondays and Fridays or whatever in our elementary school districts. And I have a relationship, a personal relationship, in this community with them, and that goes from every single Nicaraguan, El Salvadorian, as todo. So for me, especially in this particular case, I think it's very important that people understand that communicating with that community, and this council went above and beyond when we attended events. Our mayor went to the churches to get feedback. We have gone on our feet, grassroots, to embrace and to let the people know and show our faces. So that impact, and with Faith in Action, I've had a relationship before this, with Faith in Action, and I continue to have one now, and it's a solid, a good relationship. So for me, that trust factor that's there, and it needs to be solidified in this to let people know, moving forward, so that the community itself, no matter what their background is, that this is a way to go above and beyond, like you said. You put extra into it, and I don't think any other city has done that, because we want to let people know that there's no loopholes here. It seems to be that the Values Act could have, like, a few of those that could have been loopholes as well, as most legislation does. But I like that we go above and beyond, because that's what this council does. So I thank you for your expertise, city managers, city attorney, the police, POA, and our fellow council here, and our community members that did give input. Thank you.
Any other comments?
All I've got to say is this cannot happen again. And I think that with all the members and people that have came in to collaborating in terms of meetings, working with the Police Officers Association, City Council, we have to create a historical legacy and setting a precedent in Daly City, because this is a city that is diverse. We got to find a way, and I think that, just like alluding to, vice managers, there's still an ongoing investigation, and we need to have more details that need to be out there. But I think this is the right step in terms of creating a policy that is responding to the federal trend of anti-immigrant sentiment throughout this nation. And what happened in Mississippi, and it's entailed in the policy about not doing sweeps, this is our way of saying, this is Daly City's way of addressing this racist administration. So I just want to thank for all those that have been responsive, from the mayor going to all the churches, to getting people into the meetings. And you know what? There's not a perfect policy. I think that's the issue of things being equitable, is that you lose some, you gain some, but we have to start somewhere. And for me, I feel like whatever, what happened to Armando cannot happen again in our community. So thank you for everybody that was able to contribute to making this happen.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Ms. Manala?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I echo what council member Rod Dos McBall had mentioned, that this should not ever happen again. But this process of meeting with community members and the process of meeting with his girlfriend, and also the response of staff to prioritize this important issue is reflected here today. You know, what's being proposed and mentioned is it steps further to ensure that this doesn't happen. It's in the operational policy that there are going to be more checks within. And so for me, it is important. This is something important to us as a council and to our community that is out there that, you know, we are prioritizing this, and this is here now, because it's not something that we're trying to put on the back burner. And so, you know, it's us working together, especially around the national sentiment that's happening against these anti-immigrant sentiments that should not happen. And really, we are a city of immigrants. You look all around us, and there has been effort by a mayor to go to churches. Last weekend, we were at the celebration with the Salvadoran community. And so this is a step forward for us, and really to put something within the operational policy so that we can move forward and that this should never, ever happen again.
Thank you, Ms. Manala. Okay, so let me sort of summarize where I think where we are as a community. So when we got the alert, when we found out what happened to Armando, we mobilized and we quickly called a meeting amongst the council. We did it as fast as we could, and we all met together, and we talked about this for a very long time, for a very, I would say, important, lively, insightful discussion on what happened. We then met with members of Faith in Action, we met with the Asian Law Caucus, and we met with the girlfriend of Armando, who I personally expressed my regret for what happened to Armando. We promised... We promised that we would reach out to the community to try to regain their trust. We immediately started an independent investigation on what happened here. The investigation is still ongoing, and we expect to have the results in about another 30 days. Our chief of police took the unprecedented action of writing personally a letter to the immigration officials asking for the release of Armando. Our city council, all five of us, wrote a joint letter asking for the release of Armando from ICE custody, which I understand gratefully he has been released. Our staff worked diligently to look at our previous resolutions and affirm a resolution and prepare it for immediate decision at the next council meeting. We went to churches, we went to festivals, we passed out our resolutions, we passed out the letter, the, the statement that we made as a city, we passed out the letter that the chief of police issued a directive saying, "You are not to cooperate with ICE." We passed all that out to the, to the churches, primarily the Spanish-speaking churches. We went to an El Salvadorian festival to do the very same thing.
The council general.
And with the council general of El Salvador. We just today announced the Know Your Rights Immigration Seminar that we're putting on by the community who's done it because of what's been going on. We are about to pass another resolution, creating a welcoming city here in Daly City at the next item on this agenda. And tonight, we are passing a new resolution that incorporates the Cadillac model of policies when it comes to immigration enforcement, San Francisco and Oakland, going above and beyond what has been asked for. We have consulted with an independent outside law firm as a check on us to see if we are in compliance with SB 54. Not only is the opinion we're in compliance, but we have gone above and beyond it. So I think we, as a council, have responded. We may not be perfect in our response, but we're doing what we can balancing public safety and also the protection of immigrant rights. So I want to applaud the staff, the police, the community, and the council for coming together to find some kind of a solution to try to help fix this problem and make sure this doesn't happen again in Daly City. So with that, unless there are any further comments, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution on the new policy for the Daly City Police Department.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Let's go on to item number seven, which is the resolution for the Daly City, for Daly City to join the Welcoming America and declare Daly City a welcoming city and authorization for the city manager to join the Welcoming Network. Mr. Stolp?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. So, yes, before you tonight is a resolution to join Welcoming America. And I want to tell you a little bit about that organization. First, we did receive direction from the council to investigate ways to make all of our city programs and policies more inclusive. And it really became this idea of how, how do we embed inclusiveness into everything we do? And, and also to reflect the two resolutions that the city council passed in, in 2017 and then just last July. And what we discovered was there's a nonprofit organization called Welcoming America, and they offer a membership program called the Welcoming Network. There's currently over 200 members in that network, including seven local governments in California. They are San Francisco, San Jose, Santa Clara County, Anaheim, Long Beach, Chula Vista, and San Diego. And there's also six nonprofit members in California. You, you can join as a nonprofit and as an individual to the Welcoming Network. So it, membership in Wel, in the Welcoming Network offers tools, resources, technical assistance, and then this wider global network of members that are all committed to transforming their communities into welcoming places. By joining, we would strive to advance and institutionalize welcoming efforts by communicating our values, by engaging partners, and then implementing specific programs. We would also commit to hosting an annual Welcoming Week event. This occurs in September, and I actually, we were talking, the Love Not Hate event is probably a perfect candidate for that Welcoming Week. We would also complete an annual State of the Welcoming Survey, and we would pass a welcoming resolution very similar to the one before you tonight. And then upon joining, we would also complete a self-assessment. Membership at the core level, it's $1,500 a year, would provide us with an access to resources, to four hours of phone coaching and strategy sessions with the staff at Welcoming America, as well as onboarding assistance. When I was reviewing this organization, they, they really do have a wealth of resources at their fingertips that they provide to their members. So I'm, you know, kind of excited to see where we can go with that. Welcoming America started in 2009, and they're also part of the hashtag With Refugees Coalition. It's part of the United Nations Refugee Agency, and they're, they're kind of a known name at this point throughout the country. So if there's any questions?
So when I was thinking about this idea, I had originally thought, wouldn't it be great if Daly City was, was a part of a refugee, was known as a refugee city? Now, my understanding of a refugee city is that you have to pretty much be built to be a refugee city. You have to have the, the tools, the housing, the organization, the, the assistance to welcome refugees here and also sort of help them and take care of them. I understand that we're not really equipped for that. And if you could explain how, what a refugee city and why that's...
Yeah, so refugee city, it turns out, is a very specific term, and there's an organization called Refugee Cities that is working on it since 2005, 2015, I'm sorry, and they have a consulting group on board to implement it. It's really focused on countries with large refugee populations or large refugee flows across their borders into displaced people's camps and things like that. And it kind of takes from the idea of a special economic zone, and it's really focused on creating job opportunities in these refugee camps. So it's not, not exactly our situation here. In the U.S., the State Department oversees resettlement of refugees in the U.S. We are the largest resettlement country in the world, followed by Canada, Australia, and some Nordic countries. But just to give you an example, they, so the State Department uses nine domestic resettlement agencies to facilitate the resettlement of refugees in places with job opportunities, with lower cost of living. So last year in California, there were only about 1,400 refugees resettled in our state. There were two in Daly City from Burma. There were three in San Francisco. So the numbers are pretty low among Bay Area cities, and it's mostly due to the cost of living. Also, the State Department does focus on areas where the resettlement agencies have adequate resources to oversee the process. They provide housing assistance and much more. So that's kind of the take on refugees.
Do you know what cities are refugee cities here in California?
I, I don't know of any.
There's none?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So, you know, in the U.S., most refugees, at least last year, they were resettled in Texas, Washington, and Ohio. So...
What countries there...
Yeah, they, well, at least, I have a chart here, but the top three are the Democratic Republic of Congo, the second is Burma, and the third is Ukraine.
I thought Syria would be...
Syria, it's interesting, because in terms of the global number of refugees that were considered for resettlement, there's about 80,000 of them, and UNHCR oversees that, that's the UN Agency for Refugees. Syria, so in terms of those refugees, Syria is the number one country. In terms of the actual numbers of refugees that were resettled, I think it's, it's 50, about 55,000. They mostly came from Lebanon, Turkey, Jordan, and Uganda, so the countries don't match up in terms of the number that attempted resettlement versus the numbers that were actually resettled.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Go ahead. Any questions? Any questions, Mr. Vice Mayor?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you for the presentation. It was great. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Manala.
So with a welcoming city, I don't see it here. I know that one, or unless I missed it, one of the requirements of being a welcoming city is ensuring that there's a staff dedicated to, you know, to this effort?
That, in talking with the staff at Welcoming City, I, they did not tell me that was a specific requirement, but in order to participate, you kind of have to have someone dedicated to...
So who's, who's going to be the staff person?
To be determined.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
You get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, can I get a, a adoption by roll call?
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Stephen. All right, so we have now gone to public appearances or communications, and I have one speaker card, Tyler Mann. Tyler, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I'm a young resident of our fair city, and many young people are concerned for the safety and security of all people in our great country, regardless of age or ethnicity. As you may know, there have been multiple mass shootings these past few weeks in our country and also in our state. There was an ordinance passed from the city council of San Rafael to keep all flags citywide at half mast until our Congress has, ooh, excuse me, until our Congress decides to act on stronger gun control policies. I would like to propose a citywide ordinance to keep all flags citywide at half mast until our Congress decides to pass any gun control policies. Thank you for your time, and please consider this.
Thank you, Tyler. I actually read that article, and I thought it was very interesting. The mayor got just fed up and said that, you know, because Congress won't do anything, and he said, you know, unless they do something, we're going to leave them down. And I, I saw that, and it, and it got me thinking. So we, we are, let me just tell you, we are very much concerned about the, the gun safety issue and protections, and so thank you for your comments. I appreciate it very much. Okay. I don't have any other speaker, oh, wait a minute, I have Sunny. Sunny filled out another one. Sunny, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
I know you're running really late. It won't, it won't take too much of your time. Again, this is a continuation of my report to you on the abuse that's going on at the Franciscan, and I will direct my message specifically to Attorney Rose and Shona. As I reported in the last council meeting, a collection of 2,500 is still not stopped by management. I do not have any response from you folks. There is no permit, there is no majority approval from the FRAC membership, and I received an email from the National Cooperative Bank saying that they have nothing to do with this collection of money at the park. Therefore, these homeowners who are collecting from our fellow homeowners are doing it on their own. And this came about when I asked them questions that they could not answer, and one question I asked them is, where is the money going? There is no report submitted up to now, so I think it's about time that we issue a formal stop on this activity, and I'm requesting Attorney Rose and Shona to help me with this. And let's move on with the transfer of ownership. I would suggest that we schedule a study session. We have a court order to transfer the ownership to FFC. That needs to be complied with. I know there is a disposition agreement already submitted. Let's attend to it, and I'll try to pursue this with Shona and Rose, and of course, the council. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Kinney Kinney. Okay, moving, I have no other speaker cards, I don't think, and let's go on to appointments. Any appointments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd like to reappoint Tom Nurse to Personnel Commission.
All right, there's a motion to appoint Tom Nurse. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favors?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, he's reappointed.
And I'd like to reappoint also Commissioner Dory Paniza to Arts and Cultural Commission.
Okay, there's a motion there. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objection? No, hearing none, she's reappointed. Any other appointments?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other appointments? Hearing none, how about reports? Council committee reports from July 9th to August 11th. Any council committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had Jefferson Union High School District Council, City Council Committee meeting with the administration of Jefferson Union High School and two board members in regards to their development at the Cerro Monte del Rey site. They informed us about the teacher housing that will be located, teacher staff housing that will be located on that site, but also let us know about their future plans in regards to redeveloping the whole property, over 20 acres. They have a plan to, at this point, there's nothing fully baked conceptually, but what we've heard and from their presentation, it will be majority residential and also at market rate. And so we are looking forward to seeing what their conceptual plan is moving forward. They will have some, I believe, some retail on there, but majority housing.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Di Giovanni?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Councilmember Manalo, she was great in that meeting, being sitting beside her, she has a lot of knowledge. And also, I attended the SFO roundtable, and the newest thing is, that's going to be allocated, is they have a vendor for the noise detectors that they're going to come to Daly City. And so in some cities, they are asking residents where they think is the, the noise, or if they said they, the controversy is, or do you ask the city manager and council, do they want to keep them in the same spot, or would they like to move them to another spot? So they're going to be sending me the details of where they are in the, in Daly City, and then I'll bring it to council and to the city manager first, and then before we decide what direction we would like to go. And so that was the SFO roundtable. It lasted till 11, almost 11:30, from 7 to 11:30.
Do you know if the noise level detectors is something an individual household can put in their house?
Actually, this vendor actually is going to have personal ones as well, that can be, with a monitor, that can also be given to individuals as well, which is the first time they've ever had that. And actually, there's a new program as well, that's going to be like live tracking airplanes, where you can see them when they're actually landing. Of course, there's like a three-second delay for... Of course, it's like a three-second delay for safety concerns, but it's actually active. So like you saw some people at the roundtable, it was like they were like watching them, and it was all the traffic, so that you can -- what we were asking is, can they actually on that new program, is there any way that people can actually complain live, like when something is happening? So they're going to look into that, see if they could do that as well.
Yeah, because I've gotten some complaints, in particular in the Bay Shore area.
Bay Shore, yeah.
And so they could use some monitors there if--
Okay. Thank you for the feedback.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Any other council committee reports?
I do.
Go ahead, Ron.
I attended the PCE Board meeting, July 25th. They have numerous dates. They're trying to advocate and promote the purchases of electronic vehicles. So they have different test drives that are out there in the next couple -- next -- this actually, this month. So they have electronic vehicle test drive at the Facebook Festival, Saturday, August 17th, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Facebook Headquarters, one hacker away in Menlo Park. They also have one Burning Game on the Avenue, Sunday, August 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. between -- on Burning Game Avenue between Al Camino Avenue and California Drive. There's also a PCE Board retreat, September 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then also, they were stressing the notion of discussion direction of adopting reach codes for new buildings in Daly City. So probably I might have a discussion with you, Sean, about that. And then they had a real cool presentation on energy use and lead platinum building designs. It's a case study of a new Veterans Memorial Building Senior Center, YMCA in Redwood City. So they talked about using like super-energy-efficient engineering to construct this building.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Ron. Mr. Vice Mayor? Ceremony.
Yeah.
That was just today. Is that the next council?
Yeah, report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor and I just participated in a meeting today, and I remember back in 2016, the master plan for Ceremonie. I can't wait to tell you what is coming, and it's going to be good. It's going to be good. So I won't give you all the details. No, no, Ms. Miller, I'm not going to tell you right now, but it's going to be good. But I'm looking forward to it. I hope I'm still alive when it's built. But you know what? I look for our future and our future generations, and they will have restaurants. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes. I attended the Bosca Meeting, the Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency, on July 18. Just wanted to let you know that the water supply and water use, water use in our service area is still less than pre-drought, so that's really great in our region. Water storage in the SF Regional Water System is at 96.09% as of July 14, 2019, which is slightly greater than normal storage at this time of year, which is usually at 91.7%. The hetch-hetchy storage is at 99.8% of maximum storage. Total water use by Bosca Agencies in May 2019 remained at 26% less than the pre-drought use in May 2013, and Bosca continues to monitor the overall drought rebound in the service area. Bosca Board authorized the CEO to enter an agreement with the SFO's associates to conduct an audit of the San Francisco PUC's asset management program. Also authorized the CEO to enter into MOU with the Regional Water Authority to implement regional smart controller program as a new subscription conservation program. Also, the State Water Resources Control Board, Water Quality Control Plan update. On July 1, 2019, the California Secretaries of Natural Resources and the EPA released a progress report detailing the status of a voluntary agreement effort. And I will send the rest to Madam, a city clerk, for all of you to see the rest of the report. It's pretty lengthy.
Great. Any others? All right. How about number 10, City Council reports? Any -- go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Giovanni.
I'm sure we're all going to speak about this one, but we had a great national night out thanks to our Daly City PD, and we're heading it out, and our firefighters, our waste quarter, Daly City Recreation, our veterans, you name it. Everybody was there. Great family, great fun. Car guys, the Filipino car guys were there. That was fun, too. And I think it turned out really well. Weather held out pretty well, and looking forward to next year. And thank you to Captain Gamas, Christian, everybody, the chief. It was great. And fellow council members as well for attending. It was great. And then one more thing is that I spoke with our firefighters. I don't know if many of you remember that last year I had brought up the issue of our city has never done anything formally on the commemoration of 9/11. And I know I was speaking as a community member then, and I was in conversation with our firefighters at the time, and I spoke with them again today, and they -- so I'm in conversation with them as well as Lee, and I would talk to the police. And they do something very simple this year, but to do it at the time, they usually do something on their own with the time of the -- it hits the first building at the time of the East Coast time, so it's pretty early in the morning. But and of course, they read the numbers of the 343 with a bell of the firefighters, but they welcomed and thought it'd be great if we also had our members in blue because we know that there were many of them lost. So they're two humble groups that don't discuss this, but I think that this is something that the city should be there when they raise the flag, when they read the names and let them read the names, and for us to be there with them for support, because it hits them pretty hard. And it hits us as well as members of -- I know especially our vice mayor is a law enforcement and our vice mor, but I think that if we could continue this yearly, I would really deeply appreciate it and would love to have the council's support, and--
Where do they do it?
They have been doing theirs at 95, and they play a record out loud. I believe they ring the names, and then they say, I think it's Amazing Grace, and they keep it very simple. It's very quiet, and they are welcoming. I asked them, spoke again today, because I know it's been pretty heavy on my heart. And I spoke with Lee, and hopefully that they will join, the police will as well, in whatever they would like to do. I was trying to get a piece of the World Trade Center. I'm in the process of still trying to work on it, but I won't be able to do that now that I'm on council and things, of course, have settled down, as you can see, but that we could maybe find that and put that somewhere maybe the next year after this. But this is a beginning, and if we can keep it simple and be there for them, it would really mean a lot, and I'll continue to reach out to them as well.
Great. Good. Let's see if we can make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other city council reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let the community know that I touched base with Airbnb. I know we're going to be looking towards having an ordinance around short-term rentals within our city, but I think it's important also, since there are probably other users, but Airbnb is one of them, that we work with them in order to capture the TOT tax in a way where it doesn't burden us as a city, and also find ways where we can work together if there's any issues around these rentals to ensure that there is communication with them directly. I've given the contact information to Ms. Maltby, but I think as I experienced it with many others, there are a lot of vacation rentals around our city. And seeing how much foot traffic there is, I hope they're eating in Daly City, but as far as the pavement, our roads, I mean, there's definitely a lot more going on to our streets, and so we need to capture that. It's looking great for our fiscal years ahead, but we need to capture that because that's already happening, so I wanted to share that with everyone. And I was really, truly humbled to be with Mayor Bina Ventura as he addressed the Salvadoran community in Oakland at their festival with Council General Anna, and it was just wonderful to see how engaged a mayor was with the community.
Thank you, Ms.--
I just wanted to thank the mayor as well, because it was the extension of him and that leadership and that weekend where he also went to all the churches and tried to connect, and he did it on his own. And to see him there, and we all went to Oakland as far as Councilwoman Manalo and myself to be there to support them, so that was very humbling. And I just wanted to also let you know, back to the 9/11, they might not have it at 95. I'm not sure yet, but I also talked with staff and the police and fire. Thank you.
And then lastly, sorry. I also wanted to say what a wonderful event at National Night Out. It was great to see so many families out there. I think the weather went well for us. It wasn't as windy. The Millers were there. You saw them, and it wasn't as windy, and Gary was there, too. I think every -- a lot of folks were out there, and I was happy that we didn't have the Daly City fog, but it was also nice to see, you know, the family members of our officers there to meet them as well, and it was just a great event, a great community event that united everyone together.
Excellent. Any others?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right. First of all, National Night Out. It's great that you can go to an event, and it's regarding public safety, but it's even better when you're around your constituents. I know the Millers were there. It's even better when you're around with staff who you work with, because you see them in a different light rather than seeing them here at council. Here, we're all business, but it's just like breaking bread with someone when you're at an event. So I'd like to thank the Millers. Matter of fact, it's past your bedtime tonight. You're usually gone by this time. I'm keeping you up, okay. The second item I want to remind everyone is PSPS. And if you don't know about it, you should have gotten emails, and as we proceed later on in the future, I will remind you. Public safety power shut off. PG&E based upon certain conditions can cut your power. So it's better to be prepared and to know about that, but as I find out more, I'm on no committee for PG&E, but something to think about. Lastly, if I can give this comment. California is the sixth-largest economy in the world. That's quite an honor, and that tells a lot about California. Daly City is rated as the 83rd safest city.
Yes.
That is an honor. So amidst many things that have been going on, I want to give kudos to our public safety, especially our police officers. Not only do they care about this city, but they care about your safety as well, and it's obvious by the stats you see. So let's always remember that. They're human beings just like us. They put on their pants one leg at a time, even the females do it, too, but you know, they're our folks, and that also goes with fire. So Daly City Police, thank you for everything that you do. Continue what you do. Your peace, as I was taught, cannot be disturbed. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Ron. Go ahead.
So talk about National Night Out. One of my friends, H.J. Kuisan, that works at Mid Penn Family Services in the Bay Shore, talking about there's another National Night Out this Friday. So it's Mid Penn Family Services, Daly City Police Department, Daly City Fire Station 93 presents National Night Out, another special outdoor event featuring representatives from DCPD, Fire, Daly City Council, and--
Oh.
Yeah.
There's food.
And there's food. Yeah, there's food. So it's going to be Friday, August 16, 2019, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30. Field and basketball courts behind the Midway Village Community Center. So food and drinks, drawings, $25 gift card, and lots of different things. Unit demonstration. I don't even know. And you get to -- I'll be there. Hopefully, other folks can be there as well. So let's see.
Let's see. Okay, so we are at the point where we have some adjourn in memories, and let me start off with Pamela Di Giovanni.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A special gentleman, he's a World War II Filipino veteran, 96 years old. He served in our Army, our U.S. Army, and gave a lot for this country as well as the Philippines. His name is Desimo Sipit, but actually, everybody knew him as Uncle Donnie. So Uncle Donnie is related to our Reverend Oaks and Heidi Oaks on the Heidi Oak side. So it was pretty moving to say that we lost another one, and I'm still following up. I do hope they don't even know at this point if he did receive his medal, so I'm hopefully that I'm going to follow up, and hopefully we can find out if he did, because it's well-deserved. So now we lost another Filipino veteran. So thank you very much.
Dr. Ron, you have one?
Yeah, I have a couple. One is for Dr. Don Mabalan. It was her death anniversary this past weekend, and my family and I traveled to Stockton, California to celebrate her life. Folks have not -- never heard of Dr. Don Mabalan. She has been instrumental in terms of Filipino-American studies, the history of Stockton, Little Manila, and from one -- it's not official, but from one Filipino town to another, you know, this, you know, she's the Nenon godmother of my son. She's practically family to me, one of my professors, favorite professors, professor that became family to me. And then I also want to close on behalf of my mother. Today marks her 74th birthday, and I lost her about nine years ago, and I can't believe it's been that long, and talking and speaking about teachers. She was my first teacher. She's the person that if you give her a mic, she'll be on the mic for 90 minutes and will not stop talking. Like, so if she wasn't a nurse, she probably would have been up here on City Council talking as well, or in the classroom. So I want to adjourn on both those.
Through the mayor. May we close also on the victims of the other recent unfortunate shootings?
Of course. Did you have one? Okay. Okay, so we're -- I'd like to adjourn in memory of all those, and God bless them, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.